Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for having us this morning. Last time when I spoke to you, I failed entirely to introduce myself. So I'm not going to pass that opportunity up this time. My name is Ernesto Rodriguez. I am Chief of Emergency Medical Services. I've now completed 11 years here with the city. It's been a fun experience. I've also got 36 years of experience in emergency medical services, working in fire, private, government, regulatory, and now in the city in the third service type organization. A couple of things of my achievements. I am one of six persons in the nation that is certified improvement advisor by the IHI, which is the Healthcare Improvement Institute. And there's only six of us in EMS that have that certification. And it's an amazing opportunity. We're leveraging that here in our community. Also, recently have been selected to be one of 10 people in the nation to develop the agenda for the future of EMS that's going to take us into the year 2050. That's beyond my lifetime, and what an amazing opportunity that is. In the time that we've been here, that I've been here working on the system, we've implemented flexible deployment into our organizations. We added electronic medical records. We were among the first departments in the city to put into place business intelligence so that we could lead with evidence. We've developed a community health integration program that we now have active. We've been very innovative in hiring and recruiting. In fact, I tweeted something just this week, that we have our first all-female academy for telecommunications medics ever. So it's very exciting, very highly diverse there. So we're improving our diversity. And we have very positive people care initiatives. We went through some difficult times a few years ago, and we've made a lot of changes and improvements for that. I'd also like to introduce our medical director. I don't know that you guys have met him. Dr. Mark Eskott, if you could stand, please. He is also a recognized expert in the nation and would be one that you may want to consult from time to time and ask questions of with regard to the medical practice that we work together on. So let me see if I can get that. There you go. Our service was created as a third service by a council action in 1976. It's about 40 years ago. We have a singular mission of healthcare and practice of medicine. We have an interlocal agreement to provide transport services and paramedic services in Travis County. That was started in 2000, and we've continued that. In fact, right now, we are negotiating our agreement for 2018 as we move forward with that. In 2012, our citizens voted and approved civil service for our medics. And we are an accredited agency through the Commission on Accreditation of Ambulance Services that we got in 2013 and have carried on and are currently accredited. Our communication center has been accredited since the year 2000 by the National Academy of Emergency Medical Dispatch. So we use a national standard for dispatch and certify all our persons, and we have to meet quality standards. Let me take that. So the reason that we were asked to speak today was to talk about the possibility of whether or not our EMS department should be merged with the fire department and what opportunity for savings that might create. So we thought we'd start by talking about some of the different types of emergency medical services models that exist in the nation today. One of them is ours, a third service. That means we're a separate EMS department. We have our own structure, and we hire our own people and run our own operations. Then another model that is becoming more prominent today is the high-performance model. A high-performance model resembles a third service model, but they don't have affiliations with the governments in which they serve. So they're independent, and they're generally private organizations. They do not rely on tax subsidy to operate and have to work to generate the funds to pay for 100 percent of their costs. They're high-efficiency models. A public utility model is a model that is a quasi-governmental organization that is created by developing an EMS authority inside of a community and charging that authority with creating and managing an EMS component. Most of the organizations that do public utility models will bring in the private sector to do the transportation and then will perform the billing services themselves. And so they develop a mechanism to generate revenue and provide services in an economic fashion. A hospital-based model is another model. Those are less popular. They don't occur as often, but there are a few that operate that way. And that's where a hospital system will establish an EMS agency and serve a community. Those are usually independent of any government involvement, and they run themselves. Usually, it's for-profit, but can be for nonprofit as well. Then there's the fire-based EMS model. That is a combined fire and EMS department. Those departments vary in their design, whether the personnel that work on the ambulances may or may not be firefighters, or they may have a separate division where they hire their own personnel and just operate EMS independently of the fire service. There's different varieties of that that you see. And then finally, there's the outsourced EMS provider, and that's where a community simply contracts with a private provider to provide transportation services. So in my opinion, I think that the third service is the best of all worlds, as long as that the organization is fiscally responsible and is performance accountable and remains agile and adaptive to changes in the healthcare system, which happen very rapidly in the world, and that focuses on the needs of the patient. I believe that our organization does that. And we certainly are excited about the opportunities to look for ways to provide more and better services at the same time, reducing our costs and increasing our revenue streams. That's a really great combination that can be achieved in the type of model that we have So if we are considering a change of any sort to any types of the models that I just previously discussed, there are some things that we need to consider. First of all, asking the question and being clear about what it is that we're trying to solve. Do we have an operational issue? Do we have an accountability issue? Do we have a performance issue? Do we have a fiscal issue? What is it exactly that we're trying to solve? And then we also have to consider other issues, for example, the impact on labor, impact on contracts, pensions, wages, and any cultural differences that we have, that we may create by making a change. Those are all important things. And then ultimately, to evaluate the healthcare delivery to the public. Ultimately, what we do in emergency medical services is we practice medicine. We are healthcare providers. And so we have to keep that in mind, that whatever we do, it's not just warm bodies in seats. It is healthcare practitioners delivering healthcare at a very personal level. We customize the care that we deliver to each patient every day, day in, day out. And that should not be disrupted in any way, shape, or form. One of the thoughts that we had is that, should the council desire to explore further, that we consider providing funding to engage an independent consultant. And I want to give you an example of what that might look like. In 2015, Emergency Medical Services contracted with the LBJ School of Public Affairs to talk about how we might improve our service integration with local healthcare providers. They produced a very robust document for us. They gave us recommendations. And Mayor, you had mentioned that you'd wanted a five-year plan, and this is a big component of that. We're putting that together so you can see it all at once. So let me give you some ideas of the things that they suggest that we look at that would serve to save money for the community, save out-of-pocket costs for the citizens, and create revenue streams for EMS. So they talked about mobile integrated healthcare and expansion of community health programs, which is something that we're actively involved in. They talked about partnerships with hospitals post-discharge care. Right now, we're actively discussing with a hospital system about how we might reduce their readmissions of congestive heart failure patients. That's important to them because if a patient is discharged from a hospital and goes back to that hospital within 30 days, the hospital is no longer reimbursed for the care for that patient. That's a huge penalty for them, and it costs them millions of dollars. We have community health medics in people's homes, and we're trying to see if we can work out a proof of concept with them whereby we are reimbursed by them to provide the services to prevent people from going back. Many times, they simply need a partner to help them achieve self-care so that they don't have to return. But that creates a revenue stream for emergency medical services. So that's another element. One of the things that they talked about was developing a nurse triage center, which is basically a call center that we can use. We're looking at establishing that sort of thing to manage the readmission component. So instead of dialing 911 when they don't feel well, they call the nurse call center. They activate our community health medics, and they work with them on the telephone and in person through the medics to meet their needs so they don't have to return to hospital and be admitted again. Hospital admissions is very, very expensive. Another thing that we're looking at is extended care paramedics. One of the things that the doctor is very interested in is answering the question, how might we further develop the capabilities of paramedics to provide higher levels of care in our community? And how might we structure that? So if you can imagine that if one day you have a sore throat, we might send a medic with extended care capabilities to do a swab and collect a specimen and start you on a regimen of antibiotics right there in your home so that you don't have to go to the hospital or in urgent care or anywhere else because it can be dealt with in the home. That's an example. There's many examples. Another was to begin to utilize, instead of delivering everyone to the hospital, take them to urgent care and community clinics. So that's another component of how we might improve emergency medical services, bring down the cost of healthcare for the community by not incurring emergency room expenses for people that don't really need that. So there's opportunities there that we can work together. Another one was working with psychiatric emergency departments in local health hospitals. We are already engaged with MCOT, which is the Mobile Crisis Response Teams. They actually carry our radios and respond with us. So we're highly integrated already into healthcare. And then their last recommendation was to create a sobering center. And you know, we're way on the track for that, and EMS is deeply involved in that. So that is an example of how we might take and use local dollars to engage a local resource to create local improvements in the services that we provide. So that's an example of what that statement means, the ability to use a consultant without getting in the box of just hiring a consultant outright that doesn't have a specific focus that we're trying to achieve. I do think we have opportunities to improve. So in the meantime, are there things that we can do?
Just a quick question. So that report sounds pretty extensive.
Yes.
What year was that done?
This is 2015.
Oh, so it's recent, too?
It's recent, yes.
Okay. And that's something that you're going to share with us, right?
I have it in PDF format, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
These are kind of pricey to print.
Do you think, and maybe you want to finish your presentation first, but do you think that we actually need another consultant, or does this report really lays out a lot of very interesting ideas that you're pursuing?
I think that what we need to do is leverage what we have.
Okay.
We have a highly agile system that's very flexible and responsive. I tend to look at things in domains. So we have a response domain, and then we have a predictive domain that we use to feed that responsive domain, and then we have a preventive domain. This tends to lead towards improving how we respond.
Okay.
So if we just allow the 911 community to increase and increase and increase and increase, the only thing we have to do is grow.
Right.
If we create preventive mechanisms to go and begin to manage the growth of the 911 system, then we can level off our costs and our growths. So I may not be coming back to ask for ambulances because I've figured out ways to use the ones we have better. Or I may redeploy how we do that so that it doesn't cost as much yet delivers the same service. So those are the opportunities that we have. And I would suggest that if the council would like to do further study about how we might continue to improve our EMS system, that we consider a program like this and an approach like this to see what we can do better and more of.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
So in the meantime, there are some things that we're doing right now. We're continuing to improve the process to ensure that we respond with the right resource to the right patient at the right time. And the question is, does everybody need a big giant ambulance with two paramedics and a lot of very expensive equipment and a huge amount of talent? One of the things that we're finding is that when you look back at the historical use of our service, most of it is basic life support and a portion of it is advanced life support. So as it turns out, we're sending the most expensive resource to cases where we may not need that much force behind it. So the question is, how can we change that to better match what the community is showing us that they need while still making available the safety net of that high-end paramedic care that may be necessary from time to time? So one of the things that we're looking at is, is it possible to provide an alternative transport unit that is, costs less than an ambulance to move a person, perhaps not to an ED, but to an urgent care center or to some other clinic or some other source, that ultimately begins to reduce the cost of the healthcare system in Austin? And so we've been experimenting with that, and we've been very successful in utilizing it. One of the things you have to be careful of is selecting the right patient to qualify for that. If you make a mistake, it could be detrimental. So working with our medical director, we've developed a screening mechanism so medics can make the right choice. But we've had two results. One is that our clients that we deliver that way are very pleased with the service. And the other is that we were able to recover ambulance hours. So in a three-week period, handling a small group of patients, we recovered the equivalent of one ambulance for a 24-hour period. So that's approximately 16 cases that we would have used ambulances for that we did a whole different way. Again, that's designed to drive the costs of the EMS system and the healthcare system down for our community. It's sometimes a little bit hard to connect those dots, but they are connected and it can work. We're actively developing new revenue streams. For example, the payer group example that I gave a second ago about readmissions. In 2017, we're going to launch another phase of modifications that are going to reduce ambulance responses, and that's working with the fire department. One of the things that we've learned in history of looking at our data is that very few times do we actually need an ambulance at a car crash. Cars have become a lot safer these days. They've got airbags and crash resistance and all kinds of protections. And we're finding that a very small percentage of people actually need an ambulance. So what we want to do is we want to send the fire department first to those. They're equipped with BLS EMTs and can stabilize anything that is presented to them if it's necessary, and they can call for an ALS unit if that's needed, and then we'll respond. So that's a huge number of cases. That reduces how often we use ambulances and allows us to better utilize the ambulances for more critical cases. So that, again, is just realigning what we need at the right time for the right patient. We're also evaluating areas of duplication with AFD and EMS, and we want to work together to enhance those areas of opportunity. One that we've been talking about for some time, for example, is how we manage logistics, supplies, equipment. There's quite an intense need to have supplies and equipment for both fire and EMS. And that's one thing, one area that we thought if we combine our resources, we could do that together and perhaps save some money by cooperatively buying supplies and equipment and also by being in one location instead of multiple locations. So that's something that we're continuing to study right now. You've just heard about how we work on the wellness program together. That's another example of the things that we do. Recently, we, in this past year, we looked at how we send a fire to certain calls, and we were able to reduce their utilization by about 10,000 calls by sending EMS first and then fire if we needed them to certain kinds of cases. We do that together by reviewing the cases with our medical director and making sure that we're making the right, safe choice for the patient. So there, again, if we don't save money on the EMS side, we are sometimes saving money on the fire side by reducing responses. So we have some future cycles that we're looking at. We want to continue to modify which resources are sent to what calls as a system. That is a monthly review. We constantly do that, and then we arrive at conclusions and make changes. We want to test out, in the very near future, the feasibility of using single-medic response units. And so a single-medic response unit is a less expensive vehicle, like an Explorer, with a medic onboard who can respond beside a BLS ambulance and provide ALS care when it's needed and make an ALS ambulance if necessary. Otherwise, do a BLS transport, and we can bill for those services through insurance as well. One of the things that we want to continue to develop, as we have been, is a continuation of the growth of mobile integrated healthcare. And a prime example of that was the readmission program. One of the things that we've done most recently, we have now connected to Dell Medical School. We have had their top person who's over the learning programs come and spend a day writing out with us, talking about how can we improve the levels of expertise and abilities of the medics to provide higher level of care by integrating with the medical school. They also have a program of community health that looks at populations, and they have also spent time with us. And the big factor that they're looking at is answering the question, wouldn't it be great if we could see patients in their home, what they eat, where they live, their condition of their home, who their relatives are? EMS does that every day. So they're looking at us to see how can we integrate better with them to continue to develop that approach. Care in the home is a very positive thing. Things like telemedicine, things like extended paramedic care, things like readmission management by improving self-care and injury prevention, all positive things. So those are the things that, in the meantime, we would like to work on. We would also like to hear from the council about, what would you like us to achieve? Is it important for us to continue to work to reduce costs or increase revenue streams? Another thing is, we've had a longstanding agreement with Travis County, and we love that agreement. We like covering those services. We think it's good to do a more regionalized metro-type of coverage. But is it still wise in today's economy to continue that kind of agreement, or should we make a change there? So those are other, those are things that are way above my pay grade and things that we would need you to weigh in on to give us some guidance about what we might do. Would you like to see a reduction of some amount in the overall operating costs of EMS? Would you like to see a growth of a certain amount in revenue streams by EMS? What kinds of things would you like us to do so that we can continue the services that we provide and the way we provide them?
So I think some of the questions I had, you have identified here as questions. And what I'm hoping for is to be able to get answers or opinions or recommendations on those. So I think we were generally familiar that there were alternatives for models. So I think the question that we were asking is, so what's an evaluation of those? Should we be looking at any of those? Should we not be looking at any of those? So a lot of the questions that you asked, my answer to that would be, yes, we'd like to have answers to those questions so that we can see. And as we're entering into the contract negotiations, which as we're doing now, it seems timely because some of the answers to those questions relate to, in other words, we could be deciding things in the contract negotiations that mean this is an academic conversation for us to have for the next three years. And it could be that if we were going to make any changes, you need a three-year lead time on it anyhow. I just don't know the answer, I just don't know the answer to that. But I want to make sure that we've at least discussed that question as we enter into those contract negotiations, to the extent that we're deciding indirectly some of the questions that were raised. I would also repeat, I'd like to see that report as well came out in 2015, and any progress that has been made with respect to those recommendations over the last couple of years that they've been in. And since I haven't seen the report to know whether or not that report speaks to, or it gives us advice on some of the questions, other questions that we have. I think that the questions that we had back when we were going through this with the budget, which was, you know, are we sending out more equipment than we need on a call? What is the integration with respect to the calls? You suggested that we don't need an ambulance on all the cars, calls. Do we need a fire truck on all the calls? And it's clear that in some instances, we only need one or the other. So how do you, which one? Do you send out a fire truck, or do you send out an ambulance to that, to that call? So a lot of the questions, I think, that we had, we still have. And then the question, then, how do we, how do we begin to have that conversation or daylight answers to those questions?
Mayor, I'm sorry. Jasper Brown, Chief of Staff.
Yes, sir.
We, I think we provided some answers. Ms. Houston had asked a question on how many responses EMS and fire both jointly go to. We provided some of that data to show that we don't send both to all medical calls, and we've had reductions in those. And as the chief talked about, we're talking about reducing those to make sure we're sending the right resources to the right place. So we're doing those reductions already, and we're continuing to look at it all the time to see, you know, where can we make sure we're sending the right resources? So, you know, in regards to that, that's what's being done now. And even in other systems, you know, the fire, whether it's a combined system, they still send first response. If you look down the road in San Antonio, their fire side of the house goes on 50 percent of their medical calls still. So we're, you know, that still occurs in all types of models, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor?
Let's go to Ms. Paul, and then Ms. Houston.
Chief, could you reiterate? You were talking about different EMS models that are in the United States. We've got our current third service model, which is a separate EMS department in a municipality. There are other privatized type models, like the public utility model, hospital-based model, outsourced EMS provider, and then the consolidated, which was a different item that has been kept around a little bit previously in the Public Safety Committee when we had the committees. And I think you talked a little bit about these different models, and you said that you thought that our current delivery service, service delivery model was, if you could reiterate what you, what's your recommendation there?
Yes, well, my recommendation is that we stick with the third service model, and there's a lot of reasons for that. I'm trying to keep it short because I can get into this a whole lot. As a third service, we have a single mission. We're never confused about why I exist and what we do. We hire people that actually want to do this for a living. What we see in other organizations, and we looked at Houston Fire, we looked at Corpus Christi, they're struggling right now keeping medics on ambulances, and they're through contracts forcing firefighters to become paramedics. We don't think that's the best way to do it because you want people who want to do that for a living to do it. So those are some of the downsides that, you know, when you talk to me about merging fire and EMS, it really is a value statement about what do we think that we do and why do we do it? And we're healthcare practitioners. We practice medicine. We do it on a very personal level. That needs to be preserved by whatever it is that we do. When you look at high-performance systems and you look at public utility models, they're very efficient, but they have some of the highest turnover rates in the industry. So we, for example, are between 10 and 13 percent turnover rate. They exceed 20 percent. And so the turnover rate is really high. How they save money is they, one example is they don't use stations. They simply park their ambulances on street corners all day long, which is why they have high turnover rate. And it is expensive. It's more expensive in vehicles from that regard. But high performance means that they're high accountable. They measure- They measure their performance very clearly. One of the things that we've done is I've worked in a high-performance model and in a public utility model. I brought in the measurement aspect. So you can look on our website and you can see how well we perform. So we're very accountable. So we brought in flexible deployment as well. One of the things that we do is we start off at stations, but during busy times, we move our ambulances to the nearest location where we predict the next call is going to be. And we find that usually within 10 minutes of arriving at that alternate location, we call them post-locations, they, they get a call. And so it's very effective. That's another efficiency tool that we brought over from high-performance systems. That's how we do third service. There are third service models that do not do any of that. They're very similar to the static deployment that's commonly used by fire service and they don't redeploy their resources. We also do peak load staffing, which is another attribute of both high performance and public utility models. We call them demand units and they are 12-hour units and we bring them in at the busiest time so that we can provide the best level of service at that time. We have a high reliability in our response times. People in Austin do not have to worry if an ambulance is going to be on time when they, excuse me, when they call us. We're, we're very reliable in there and that's an improvement. This third service was not that high performance when I walked in the door. We would only get to about 82% of calls on time. Now we exceed 90% month to month.
So generally, you are not recommending that we privatize our emergency medical services?
I am not. I do not recommend that we privatize our emergency medical services. I do not think that, that would be the best and most robust type of system that we may have. So for example, private can be very inexpensive, but they're also very thin. So when you have an airplane that hits a building in our community, when you have 23 people run over during an event, when you have a mass shooting or any other horrific type of situation, they run out of units very quickly. They have just enough. We have built some capability where we can expand our service quickly. You would not have the response to K2. You may have seen the story where we've got foot medics, community health medics going out proactively seeking out users before they get sick. You will not get that in the private sector unless you chose to pay extra for that. But you wouldn't get the depth of an EMS system versus an ambulance service.
I'd also like to point out that our EMS first responders, all the employees in that division are part of the employees' retirement system, which is what our professional staff, other than our other uniforms, are a member of. And that's governed by state law and it would be disruptive to the actuarial soundness of COERs, the City of Austin Employee Retirement System, to remove the funds of all those employees, should that be, you know, even recommended. And moving them into the fire department retirement system would also probably require some changes to state law as well. Those statutes aren't under our control. And so even just the discussion of privatizing or combining these two first responder units is exceedingly complicated. And if it were to be looked at with any vigor, it would have to be a very long-term kind of a discussion to tease out all of the ramifications that may not be immediately apparent. It's, it's a lot more complicated than just saying now you're going to report to the fire chief. So we did take this up a couple of times in the Public Safety Committee. Back a couple of years ago, I was on that committee and it, it didn't receive a lot of encouragement from the four of us, well, at least three of us that were on that committee is my recollection. So, and I also know that having this on our agenda today did cause a little bit of consternation among our employees. They were immediately concerned that they may be losing their jobs and I was concerned that we might, there might even be the specter or the shadow of a, of a potential that we would be losing some really valuable employees who really do put their hearts and souls into this work.
It also, if I may comment, it also makes it very difficult for ongoing recruitment. People that are choosing their careers want to know where they're going to work. We have some vacancies that we're trying to fill. We're moving rapidly to do that. But whenever we start having these discussions, people will wait or they'll choose somewhere else to work where they don't have to risk a big change in their careers.
And then just the last thing that I'd, that I'd ask, I think it was back in February when we first had your presentation, one of the first, I think you guys were the first up for our budget presentations. I noted that Dr. Eschott had recently come to work for the City of Austin. He's the medical director and he's not exactly in the leadership lineup that you all are in, but he does have a valuable perspective on how our officers and our responders are working on the street. And I'm glad that he's here today and I just, I had asked at that time if we might have an opportunity to get his thoughts on how, how our EMS folks are working from a medical perspective and just the, the work that they're doing. I don't know if we have maybe five minutes or if he's even prepared to make that kind of a.
I will yield my seat.
Comment, but I think it, it might be really helpful to everyone to hear from you. Welcome to the City of Austin. I think this may be your first opportunity to speak with us. Mayor, if we may.
You'll be fine.
Thank you.
First of all, I'm very excited to be here and to be working amongst what I see as our community heroes. We do have folks who are out there every day risking their lives and completely dedicated to serving our community. And my role as the medical director is to make sure that they have the tools to do a very good job. Having said that, I think we have thought leaders in emergency services right here in the city. We've got a fire chief who is a national leader in the fire service. We have an EMS director, EMS chief, who is a national leader. We have a medical director who is a national leader in these things. We have the tools and the ability to look at the mission, assess our resources and determine a new path forward, which is going to provide better service to our community. I think in doing so, we also have to keep in mind the importance of our workforce and how to support them, how to give them the tools that they need to do the job correctly and also to provide them opportunities for growth and career development. One of the critical issues in EMS nationwide is that we have a personnel shortage. We have a, it's actually a worldwide shortage of folks who want to do this job. And part of that is because there is not a career ladder in EMS. This is something that we are focused on. This is an issue that we've been meeting with quite regularly, Chief Rodriguez, myself, with the, the union, to discuss opportunities of how to provide that development opportunity through increased oversight. In doing so, we also provide increased services to the community. The old model for EMS has been, we send an ambulance out to a person's home or to the street where somebody's having an emergency and we pick them up and we take them to the hospital. That's not a viable model anymore. That's an expensive model. That means that we have to take somebody from where they are somewhere else to provide that definitive care. The model of the future is to assess the situation, to send the resources and to determine the best method to disposition that person, which is not always going to be transport to the ER. It may not be transported at all. In fact, looking forward with enhancing our dispatch capabilities in telemedicine, it may not be sending anybody at all. It may be providing that connection with a nurse triage line or even telemedicine with a physician from the, the point of contact with the patient. These are things which this city and these emergency services are actively in discussion about. This is not a stagnant system. This is not a system that is not looking for opportunities to innovate and develop and be more fiscally responsible. And I ask you all that, that you give us the opportunity to, to really assess the situation, assess our mission and our resources and let us look for opportunities to do this smarter, to do it more effectively and to not only save the city money, but save our citizens' money. As you know, healthcare is very, very expensive and the solution we have right now is very expensive for them as well. And that's something that we, we've got to fix. We've been actively engaged, as Chief Rodriguez said, with the medical school, with the dean, with population health, even with the UT undergraduate school to really try to utilize all of our resources to do this job better. And I'm quite excited to, to be engaged in that process and look forward to looking for opportunities to further enhance what we're doing.
Thanks.
Mr. Gedgeon.
I wanted to, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I wanted to respond to the chief's questions. He had asked some policy questions for us and so I'm not sure I'll remember them all, but I wanted to just say this. I, I'm very excited about the, the kinds of, of examples you gave us of the innovations that EMS is working on. And I want to applaud you for being the forward-thinking leader that, that you are. I mean, I think, you know, the kinds of problems that we have in our healthcare system are not rocket science and they're not new. But EMSs are uniquely situated to address a lot of them and it's all about the right, you know, serving the patient at the right time with the right service and, and avoiding the inefficiencies like readmissions. Readmissions are terrible inefficiencies in our system, both for the cost and for the patient and the service of care at home and many of the things that you said. So you had asked us some policy questions, which I'm going to try to respond to and if I forget one of them, let me know. But I think that I have not seen a reason at this point to, to do something that would cause difficulties for what is a successful system with EMS and one that's on the cutting edge. So I am personally not interested in seeing any kind of merger or seeing any kind of privatization of EMS. Instead, I think that what we need to be doing is working with you on the kind of innovations that you've talked about because that is the cutting edge and that is where we will cut cost. And because the place that we cut cost is on making sure that people are receiving the right care, not too costly a care. So I, you know, just as one council member to give you my perspective and to try to respond to your question about policy, that's where I would be coming from. Now, part of the challenge for us is that you're providing a service to the entire community.
Correct.
And that includes other jurisdictions that are responsible, like the county. So I'd be curious to understand what the relation, what the arrangement is with the county. The other thing that you're providing service for is, like you said, for hospitals on readmissions. And so, and you're providing a service for central health. So, so you're providing service for the community as a whole and I know you've been working with your partners and so the community should support EMS as well as the City of Austin and we've talked about that before and I know you're working on that when you talk about working with hospitals and with Dell and those sorts of things. So does that get at your questions? Can you tell me, is there something I'm forgetting in terms of the questions you posed?
That covers the questions that I had and I really appreciate your perspective on this. I know you've got tremendous experience in healthcare and so I think that, that helps move the thought. I sincerely would like the opportunity to meet some of the objectives that the council has. We know that you have concerns about the cost of public safety. We'd like to take a shot at seeing what we can do as a department to reduce some of that cost and reduce the burden on, on the tax-paying community. We want to join with you in that. We are as much interested in that as you are, I believe. But we do think that the way to do that is to begin to reduce the dependency of EMS on the tax dollar. And you do that by replacing that with alternative revenue streams. We have that capability. So those are the things that we have to build, but it takes us away from the non-traditional, I mean, from the traditional perspective of what an EMS looks like.
Well, I'm also curious about what you said about, and help me understand, there's a national effort to look at the future of EMS that you're part of?
Yes. So we have, we have a current agenda for EMS, the future of EMS that we're operating under that was developed in 1996. There were things in that 1996 document that came out and baffled us, but today we're doing them. And for example, the integration of healthcare into EMS and community health and all of those. Those are things that have been driven by that national agenda. Now the NHTSA, which is the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, is, is now funded the development of the next iteration of that future agenda.
Okay.
And to do that, they, they have selected 10 national experts to drive that development of the agenda. And I've been privileged to be selected as one of those individuals. And we'll be gathering information from all over the nation about EMS from all different types and sources and beginning to develop what EMS is going to look like in the year 2050 and all of the changes that need to happen to make that happen. And so, like I said, that's, that's beyond my lifetime and what a privilege that is to be involved in that.
What's the timeline for that?
We have already started. I believe that in about a year, we'll be producing our first draft of that document following four major national meetings and many, many smaller meetings. None of us who are on that advisory group were selected to represent any particular type of EMS. We were selected about, based on our history of innovation, whether or not we're thought leaders and our experience in emergency medical services.
Okay. It would just seem that we would want to understand the results of that kind of process before we made any major changes, which is another reason why I think we need to focus on the success that you have and to help you with your continuing success rather than changing your model at this point. So I would not be supportive of, of changing the model.
Thank you.
Ms. Alder, Dr. Alder.
Thank you. I had a couple of comments and, and questions. On the question of whether you should be focusing on alternative revenue sources, from my perspective, I would encourage that only so far as we are solving at the same time the broader health challenges that we face in the community. I wouldn't want you focusing energies on just getting revenues to cover your costs, but if there are ways to add revenues that also solve the larger problems and in, in the broader context, I would like to see that happen. I am a little bit concerned and trying to understand, you know, how what you're doing is relating to what we're talking about in health and human services. And I think underlying our conversation that we're having about public safety and its role in the general fund is a desire to be able to spend more in some other areas, including health and human services. And so I'm a little bit concerned to, on one hand, to hear about, well, EMS going into these businesses that are over there. On the other hand, I really was fascinated by the comments by the medical director about how we could be better meeting needs and the models there. So I think we're, we're going to have to have a discussion about, you know, what is the role of EMS? What is the role of the city? And how do we think about that across departments? I have some friends who were involved in that 2015 PRP over at the LBJ School. And if I recall correctly, it was finished in June or May of 2015.
It was May.
So that's almost two years. What have you implemented from that? I know there was at least one recommendation that seemed like it could save a huge amount of money, I think was in that report. I know it was talked about by one of the professors where you have a situation where EMS, you have to take somebody to whatever hospital they ask for, which adds huge amounts of cost, even if it's in Round Rock and that there are certain class of patients who are gaming that system to get access to prescriptions or some other kinds of things. So have you implemented anything in there?
So we attempted to, to do that. We, our previous medical director was against changing that policy, so we were not able to do that. That is something that the doctor and I are discussing now. My concern is that it has, it's a double whammy for us because not only does it cost us more to take someone across the city, when reimbursement, we're only able to regain the amount to the nearest facility. So there's a portion of unreimbursed expense that we have there. So that, that is a discussion that we're having right now. We haven't reached that, that endpoint discussion. There are quite a few complex variables that we have to consider. One, for example, is if you're, if you're being cared for by a specialist at a certain physician for a certain condition, you really need to go there. And so we would need to be, still be able to do some. But then others, we would have to be insistent on taking them to the nearest facility that can take care of their situation and not become a transporter for people to move across the community, which happens sometimes. We have had cases, just being honest with you, we've had some cases where we'll load up someone, they request a facility on the other side of town. We take them and they exit the ambulance and go for wherever they're going. They don't even go inside the facility. And unfortunately, uh, the law requires us to transport someone and then if they refuse care, to release them. So, that's what they do. They engage us for care and then they refuse services when we arrive at their location. Yes, we, and we have, uh, Mr. Oriana asked us if we've implemented any of the recommendations. We have focused our primary effort in the expansion of the Community Health Paramedic Program by working with the Community Health, uh, Programs of the County. And so, working through them, we have done several navigation projects. We're, the ATU project, which is the Alternative Transport Unit project, is one that we're doing together with the, the county. And we're testing it to see what the feasibility is of using that method to take care of MAP patients. So, the, the concept is that if there's a cap on how much money we're able to get for covering MAP patients, might we be able to reduce the cost of providing services by doing new and innovative things that meet their needs and thereby be able to utilize the funds that are available better? So, that's, those are two of the projects that we're working on. Recently, with the readmission discussion that we're having, we've, we had to develop the competencies to be able to do that. We've done that now, and we're able to now expand that into readmission reduction. So, those conversations just started. And we're going to move very quickly. The Ascension Health is very interested in, in testing that model out. So, I imagine that's going to move very fast. And we'll be probably on the ground within three months or so, uh, doing our first 10-patient cohort.
Thank you. With respect to the models, um, I'm not a big fan at this point of privatization for this service. But I'd love to know more about the option of FIRE-based EMS. And I'm wondering if you could speak to that, and we might be able to also hear from the fire chief, from her perspective on what that might look like and the pros and cons of proceeding in that way.
You'll certainly get some varied, uh, views of that. That is a possibility of combining. There are different ways to do that. One way is, is, as I said during my discussion, was that you would establish a division within the fire service to, to manage the EMS system. One of my, my biggest concerns is that, uh, the way that we have seen that work, it, it's not always positive. So, what we did is we did a little bit of research and we found out that there have been several mergers in the history in our nation. One in New York, one in Washington DC, one in Chicago, Cleveland, and Kansas City, all of which appear to have negative outcomes. We did find one positive one in Detroit, uh, but their EMS was in a very bad condition. And so, just about any improvement you made there would have been positive for there. And DC has probably been the worst, where even, I think, their fire chief wrote in an article that they regret having combined the system and are looking at how they might separate it out again. Another one that I think was, uh, significant was the merger that occurred in Kansas City. There was a high-performance system in place called MAST, A-A-S-T. They were high-performance, very accountable and inexpensive model. They were merged into the fire department, and now there is, it, it, there's nothing. You don't hear anything about the impact of that. Because of accounting practices, it's very difficult to tell whether you actually saved anything or not. And so, um, there, there are pros and cons to the systems. I think that, that what we've done is we've leveraged our ability to be innovative. I think we have a very good record in recruiting people and finding people that actually want to do this for a living. Uh, I don't want to see our community in a position where we're having by contract to force firefighters to be paramedics because they don't want to be. They come on and they choose their career to be firefighters, and that's what they want to do. Will they do it? Absolutely. I think you can, you can direct them to do that, and they're going to do that. But what's happening in the communities that do that is they do about a four-year stint on the ambulance, and then they find a way to promote off or get off. So, they have a four-year turnover cycle. We don't have that problem here. Just this week, we celebrated the retirement of one of our commanders after 23 years of service. That is very rare in emergency medical service organizations, but we see it. It happens here. People stay for their careers. So, I think that, that there are, uh, there are issues with, with staffing and the professionalization of, of the healthcare work that we do and the dedication to the single mission of providing healthcare to the community. The other thing is that, uh, the question is, would you save any money by doing that? I think there would be some savings. For example, you might save on the layers of administration. Me, uh, my assistant chiefs could probably go away and be managed, that, that oversight would be managed in a different way. If you kept the existing group in a division, then those people would be earning less dollars than the firefighters. But I think one thing that I think is important to keep in mind is, is you're taking a high-performance system that's, that's very accountable in terms of, uh, financial accountability, and you're putting in it to a more expensive cost model. That, the savings that you may experience may be for short-term savings, not a long-term savings. Eventually, the turnover rate, uh, will, will begin to grow. That's been a trend in all of these mergers. And the replacements are then firefighters, which come in at a higher salary. So, uh, I think over, over the long haul, you'll have a more expensive system. I don't think it would be as responsive as the system we have now is. Just, just my humble opinion.
Ms. Garza.
Um, I just, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's have the chief speak to this issue. Sorry.
So, I'm, I don't have any of the data, and I'm early prepared to speak to, you know, the advantages of a FIRE-based EMS system. I can tell you several things. I've worked in several of them. And I know that about 98% of the urban environments have FIRE-based EMS systems that work very efficiently and very effectively. And there are always going to be a couple of examples of where a merger probably didn't work. And a lot of that has to do with the process, not, not the fact that, um, it's merging FIRE and EMS, two separate systems into one. We currently work side-by-side on the street very well. So, I think culturally, we don't have the problem that cities like DC experienced, that FDNY experienced. But, um, I do believe that there is some economy of scale to be had by, uh, looking at how we could do things more together. There is, um, a program that's administered by the International Association of Firefighters, that they will come in and they actually act as a consultant. And they will look at both systems and do a report and create a report that just gives us a, uh, end result of, is it efficient for us to continue to operate the way we are? Is there ways we can do to improve our efficiency? What are some things that we can do to make this overall a better system? And, and I think the one thing that I like to think about is, is we are an EMS system. We're not separate departments. We're a system already. And I think we can find ways to improve on that system in regard to their primary mission of, uh, you know, the EMS system of delivering medical treatment and transport and our primary mission of the things that we do. So, um, I would offer up that if we want to pursue this further, that we look at, and that's at no cost. It's like getting a consultant at no cost and ask them to come in and look at our systems and give us some recommendations as to efficiencies and effectiveness of merging EMS and FIRE.
Thank you. Ms. Garza.
Um, I just want, for, for my colleagues, as we're having this discussion on response times and who responds, whether it's a fire truck or, if it's a fire truck and an ambulance, to understand the very dynamic nature of, of public safety response and that things change quickly. And, um, you know, when it's, it starts with the 911 call, which is triaged. But you, but sometimes you can't really tell from that call what you're going to show up to. So, sometimes you show up to something that, um, you don't need both. And it's not like the extra staffing just hangs out. Ambulances often wave off fire trucks and vice versa. Fire trucks will wave off ambulances. Whether a fire truck responds or not doesn't change the fact that that fire truck has to be staffed anyway. So, if anything, there would be maybe a cost savings in wear and tear on a fire engine and, and fuel. But, um, I mean, most of the cost comes from staffing. So, it's not, it's not going to change that. In, in addition to, you know, from a phone call, um, FIRE only goes to certain kinds of priority calls. They don't go to, they don't go to every call. And, um, I can't, I hate to get in the weeds or anything, but I mean, women, women, for example, experience cardiac events differently than men. And so, I remember medical calls where, you know, the woman's apologizing for calling and, and, you know, there's six people there in her living room, and she gets hooked up to an EKG and the paramedics eyes, you know, kind of do this, and she's actually probably experienced a heart attack or about to. So, you can't really, you can't really tell the situation sometimes until you're actually there. And same, same thing goes for fires. They can escalate, escalate quickly. With regards to combining the two, they are really different jobs. I, I almost think it would be like asking a firefighter to become a police officer. And there's very few that you would want to do that. While firefighters do, do medical, uh, they don't do, they don't innovate patients. They don't push meds. It's a very, very different job. And, um, and coming from San Antonio where they do, most of the time, the folks that get chosen to be, and that's a, that's a, both a system where FIRE and EMS are together, the folks that get chosen to be on an ambulance, it's not by choice. It's usually because of promotion. So, if you choose to promote and you promote to the, to the driver level, you're, you're going to be on ambulance. So, that creates a situation where firefighters don't want to promote sometimes because, and I know many firefighters, they don't want to promote because they're going to have to ride the ambulance for two years. And so, um, I really think it's, it's two different jobs. I think it's, I think if there's any efficiencies we could save in, in overhead in executive positions, we can do that now without combining. I'm not saying that that's the road that we would go down. But, um, it's a very dynamic, public safety is very dynamic. And, you know, if, if it's your loved one that's, you know, stuck on the second level and the house is on fire or has experienced some kind of cardiac event, I'm sure you would want as many people as possible. We have to have a, a well-staffed public safety to be ready to respond. And when it, and when it's not as serious as it needs to be, it changes. It's continuously changing. But we do need, we do need to be prepared for when it's, it is a really serious situation. And I think our public safety does a good job. I, I am interested in the, in the single response. That would be interesting because a lot of times FIRE is really there for extra staffing on cardiac calls while the paramedics are doing their more technical stuff. That would be interesting to see. And, and to go off of, um, Councilmember Alter hasn't been here and hear me beat my drum about public, um, health and health and human services. But I have, I'll say again, that's where we save money. When, I've been on so many medical calls where it would not have gotten to the point of that person calling 911 had they had access to healthcare or, you know, preventative care. And, and they have no, no access to that, and so, they're having to end up, end up calling 911 because, um, and I think if we invested more in our health and human services and public health, we would bring down some of those calls that, that EMS responds to.
Uh, Ms. Houston, then Mr. Flanagan, then Ms. Kitchen.
Thank you. And thank you for your presentation again today. On, on slide four, um, you, you mentioned cultural differences. And now that I'm listening to the conversation, it's not the same kind of cultural differences I'm talking about. The kinds of cultural differences that you all are talking about is the different cultures between FIRE and EMS. And so, you might want to spread that because I looked and I thought, oh, my goodness, we're about to start talking about, uh, that the EMS service does not have a representation of the people in this community. And that's something that I continue to harp on, that you all have to look at. How do we recruit and retain people that represent all of our communities rather than just, um, part of our community? So, you might want to, now I understand what the cultural differences mean. Are you all keeping track of the number of, of, there are some places where you get multiple calls every, we know where they are. Are you all keeping track of those so that we know, uh, maybe this is something that, uh, we don't need to go on or FIRE doesn't need to go on? And how is that communicated? Because there should be a listing of, of addresses where we're always sending three public safety vehicles.
Absolutely. And what we've been doing is we connect them to our community health paramedics. So, uh, and I'll give you an example of a transitional center where we were making many responses. We, uh, connected a community health paramedic there. He set up a small clinic. And instead of calling ambulances, now, uh, the, the clients go to the community health medic. He, uh, screens them to determine whether they need clinic care or emergency care. If they need emergency care, they, we get an ambulance over there very quickly. If they don't, which is the majority, uh, he makes other arrangements for them to be able to see a clinic or a physician and, and get the care that they need. That's just one example. We do track that and we do respond to it.
Great. I appreciate that. And so, when you're talking to the people at the Dell Medical School about population health, are you trying to, um, uh, get them to partner with you all in trying to see? Because they're not very mobile and they need to be mobile. Central health is not very mobile and they need to be mobile. Central health has no clinics east of 183, although we're trying to get one started. And so, that seems to me that instead of, um, hospitals and the medical offices all being west of, of I-35, we need to become more mobile and move out and be nimble and be able to get to people. And I, I appreciate the community, uh, paramedics program very much. But I think that's something that Dell maybe needs to help financially with the expansion of because it's not only, it's for the central health pa, uh, patients that can't get in and only wait till they get very, very sick. And then they call and have to go to, to, uh, whatever the new hospital is going to be called.
You're exactly right. Um, and I think the realization that healthcare tends right now to happen in hospitals and clinics, but health happens in the home and in the neighborhood. And so, what we're trying to do with them is to, uh, realize that EMS is, is a, is a great asset and a great avenue to connect those two things. Where we can take and provide healthcare where health happens, in the home and in the neighborhood. And, uh, they're in the process of developing projects where they're going to take communities and, uh, explore different methods of healthcare delivery in the community. We want to be part of that. We want to be included and included not just in the process, but in the funding and everything else for that.
And one last thing is that, uh, part of that, where the community is, is a neighborhood school. Because most schools have a neighborhood elementary school, if not a middle school. And so, I think it would be advantageous to talk with the Austin Independent School District or the other eight, um, independent school districts that are around to see if there's ways that we can partner and do clinics in, in, in those locations as well.
Good idea.
Ms. Flanagan.
I, I kind of want to ask Councilwoman Garza more about your experience. Because you said two things that, that don't line up for me. I, I agree that FIRE and EMS are very different jobs. And I'm, I'm kind of in a similar place that I'm hearing that, I don't know that merging really solves, solves much. Maybe there's some efficiencies we might be able to get to anyway without merging. But, but then acknowledging that FIRE and EMS are very different jobs, why do we send both?
I mean, they can do this too, but, uh, like on a cardiac arrest call, you need more than two people. You have someone having to notate everything. The med is innovating or, um, giving some kind of medication, and the firefighters are the ones doing the chest compressions, doing the ventilations. So, it's, it's staffing. It's, it's the additional staffing there. For trauma calls, the same thing. You have to package the patient. So, the firefighters are usually the ones packaging the patient while the medics are doing the advanced interventions. Like innovating is, you know, putting a tube down their throat, doing any kind of real advance, the doctor's stuff. They're doing the doctor's stuff and the firefighters are kind of the nurses there, you know. Actually, nurses probably do more than doctors. It's probably the reverse, but, um, sorry, doctors. But yeah, it's, um, it's that, it's, it's basic EMT, so you know how to, and, and starting the IV line. I started a million, I mean, like actually punching the, the bag and like not, not actually doing the IV, but just doing, there's so much that's going on in a, in a trauma or cardiac event that medics are just, you know, I need this, I need this, I need this. And the firefighters are the ones that are trained to do that.
I think for me, the, the operational efficiencies that I'm seeking are the fact that two-thirds of the calls that FIRE goes on are medical. And so, we've got two agencies that are substantially doing one job. And there are other cities that have looked at this. My staff, uh, found some examples, Toronto being one, that they reevaluated how they delivered, or how they worked fire and EMS together. They were able to close three fire stations as a result. If you do napkin map on that, you could save millions of dollars by closing three fire stations. So those are the operational efficiencies that, that I'm interested in.
And there, and there's another part to it too. Studies show the quicker you start CPR, the higher somebody has a chance of surviving. Well, sometimes a fire truck gets there sooner. So just having somebody there to start those chest compressions is a life-saving effort. So because of where fire stations are positioned, they can get there first many times. Many times the fire station gets, the fire truck gets there before the, the ambulance does.
And, and I think that's a great example of how we reinforce a bad system. Because if we send fire because fire's closer and we build more fire stations, then fire's always going to be closer. We never actually look at the service the community needs. We're just building more fire stations because we already have more fire stations.
But fire is closer because of response times for fires. They need to be there within a certain time for fires. That's why there's more fire stations. I think it's like a four-minute and the chief can speak to that.
And, and like I, like we talked about in the budget work session, 0.75% of the calls are structured fires. So there is, there is something to be said for the, the, the infrastructure we've built to deliver a fire response. And I speak especially from a sprawl perspective where we have 45 fire stations and 11 of them are in my district. And almost 25% of the fire stations are in my one-tenth of the city. So I, I think there are some significant operational opportunities here. And, and the, the chief said it, even on the EMS side, is safety mechanisms in vehicles have gotten better. It's changed the need for delivery just as, as safety and fire protection equipment inside of buildings have gotten better and construction services have gotten better. So I, I do think it's an opportunity to reevaluate the model in terms of where the community's headed into the future and not just saying, well, we need to build more fire stations because we already have fire stations.
And I'll just add one more thing. I agree and I think, I mean, I agree with, to parts of that. There are some stations that house both EMS and fire. And then there are some just EMS-only stations that only fire. I, I don't even know if this has been discussed, but I could see where it'd be possible to maybe close some of the EMS stations and put that truck with a fire station. But that would create some, you know, capital issue, capital improvement issues for fire stations. But there are a lot of, and, you know, I'm sure EMS director might say why they wouldn't want to do that, but that's just something I thought of while you were saying that one city was able to close fire stations. I don't know if we're in a position to be able to close EMS stations, but move that ambulance just to another close by fire station.
Right. And I'm not necessarily saying I've picked the three I want to close. But, but more so that since our city is a rapidly growing city, it's more about cost containment as we grow and growing in a smart way than trying to go and identify folks we're going to fire. And that's not what I'm saying. It's more about, you know, we think five and 10 years out, are we really building four new fire stations every so many years like we've talked about on other budget work sessions? Are we really going to sign on to that when we haven't talked about building EMS stations? When in fact, two-thirds of the calls are medical and not fire? So to, that, that's where I'm struggling to really find a good, solid answer. Not necessarily in this budget cycle, but moving forward, thinking, thinking broader about how we're building our emergency response and, and public safety agencies to match the real need of the community now and in the future.
And just to quickly, there are some questions that we've had as a council, even in these two years, that seem to be recurrent. And this is one of those questions that just seem to be recurrent. So, so part of it is just trying to figure out if there's a way to get a definitive answer to some of these questions, or at least the questions that would last us five years or 10 years so that they're not recurrent questions. And it seems like it's a question that comes up. We hear anecdotal information and then we just move on because we're in the middle of a budget session and we're not really in a position to really be able to do anything. But that means then when we get together the following year, we get back to the same questions again. I would love to see the five-year plan that you mentioned and that the, that the doctor mentioned as well.
Yes.
That would show what this is over time. And if there are cost savings that we anticipate or shared service stations or, or additional capital needs associated with new models, to be able to see that over time, I think would be, would be really helpful. But having somebody that, that from, from the outside that can take a look at these broader questions, I mean, I'm not inclined, as I sit here, to do privatization myself, but I don't have a capacity to critically evaluate that. It's just something that just generally doesn't seem to fit. But I, I certainly don't think I'm qualified to say that. And I just don't, I mean, it just seems, it seems to be a recurring question. I just wonder if there's a way for us to deal with it.
I, I wanted to speak to, to that too, if it's okay to, okay. And I appreciate you had, the chief had suggested a group that does consulting on. My concern would be, I, I would be very hesitant to, to structure, to, to structure a study using the group that you suggested because, let me explain why and, and maybe I'm missing something. But what we really need to understand is the cutting-edge role that EMS can play in the healthcare system. And any kind of study that we do needs to have people that are familiar with that, who understand that and do that all the time. And that is understanding the, the changing role of healthcare in our community and the role that EMS can play in that. And that's why I was intrigued with the national study that, that you were talking about. So if, if, you know, I, I personally am comfortable looking at just shared services. I'm not comfortable with a merger. But if others want to do some kind of study, then I would be very careful about how it is scoped and who is employed to do that. Because I really don't want, you know, I would be concerned about missing our understanding of the cutting-edge role that EMS can play. And that's an area of knowledge in healthcare that we would want to make sure that anybody that reviewed this, reviewed our future understood and had experience evaluating.
Dr. Clark.
I just, I mean, I, I, I think that I need more data in order to be able to evaluate the situation. I, I mean, I, I'm hearing kind of from everybody that in general, making changes, we could save money, but we could also see a decrease in service. But there, we don't really have any quantifiable information in order, in order to make that decision. So I don't, I don't know if between now, so I don't know if that means that I would support having a consultant look at this or, or what. And it's, and it's also difficult when these kinds of decisions impact the people who we're depending on to get this information. I mean, it's kind of unfair, I mean, it's not unfair of us to ask you to do that, but it's, it's puts you in a really difficult position to be asking you to evaluate these options without bias when admittedly you're, you're, you're in a job that is, you're naturally going to feel strongly about one way or the other. So, so I think that it's important that we have your feedback and your input. But I just don't, I don't feel like I have anything tangible to take away from this conversation in order to make a decision going forward. So hopefully we can get some of that information before we.
And I think that was one of the things that I had suggested with, in the IAFF, the International Association of Firefighters, has a whole division on EMS. And they are cutting-edge and they are looking at, you know, things that go forward. And, and the reason I suggested that was is because we did discuss amongst ourselves is bringing in a third-party consultant. Because as Councilmember Dr. Clark just said, we, we each have an emotional attachment, you know, to our departments as, as they are right now, right? So not that we're not willing to work together and not that we don't want to, you know, make the system better if we can do that. So I, I think that the suggestion was is that the, the data is then provided that, that tells the story. And then we can look at the data and their recommendations and make decisions from there. We don't have to do what that recommendation comes back to.
Let, let me just respond. I apologize. I, I think I need to respond to her question because she was talking about what I said. So I, I apologize. I didn't mean to suggest any aspersions on the group. Let me be a little clearer. What I meant to say is that that group is coming at this from the firefighter perspective because that's their organization. And so I would want to include a Dell Medical School or something like that to, to look at this from the healthcare perspective. That's all I mean. I apologize for any kind.
I understand.
Okay.
Ms. Houston.
Thank you. We've been talking a lot about the public servants, but we've taught, stopped talking about the, the patients, the people that we transport, the people that we're there to serve. And so in the different models, I'd like some data about the cost to the person. We've got some assessments, fee assessments in the back of this, of your presentation. And if I got a bill for $1,000 and then so much a mile, I think I would have another cardiac. But, but, but we're, we're focusing on one thing, but I, I need to know of these four or five models, which one is the one that the patient doesn't get? Whether they've got private insurance or whether they're on, most of, most people seem to be on federal benefits, I think. A smaller portion on private. But it doesn't tell me anything about the cost to the consumer. And so I would like to know what these different models would look like based upon the cost to, to the consumer.
I can certainly provide that for you.
Okay.
Should we go ahead into the fee assessment? I know we're going to lose some of the folks in the room at a quarter till and then we're going to break at noon. I'm going to be joining that group late. So if it's okay, should we go forward to the fee assessment part? Let's go ahead and do that.
Okay.
So Jasper Brown, Chief of Staff with EMS. So as soon as the slides are up, we're ready to go.
Okay.
I think you might have the packets in your, in your book anyway while the slides are coming up. But just a review of our performance last year in fiscal year 16. We had 131,007 incidents. Those created 100,000 patient contacts, which we transported 78,725 people. And we billed 79,000 of those folks for the, for those services. There are a few more than bill than transport. We do bill for aid on scene and, and things like that. So you'll have some of those, in those circumstances. Fee assessment in FY15, we did a cost of service analysis. And this was done for our transport fees. As a result, we did some fee adjustments that were approved by council at the time. The current cost of our service for per response is 1182.54, $1,182.54. So that's the cost of the service for the, the unit to come out and to the hospital to transport to when they're cleared. At the time in FY15, when we went through the assessment, we raised rates for Advanced Life Support 1 and Advanced Life Support 2 to the rates you can see there from 885 to 901 and 950 to 966. And our basic life support fee was raised from 815 to 831. Our base rate for clinical care ground transport, 700 to 715. And our mileage reimbursement is 1250 a mile. We went up to 1350 a mile. So those were the, the increases we saw in our fees in FY15. And that's what we currently operate under today. So any changes to those, we, we could, if we wanted to, could come back to council with recommendations and they'd have to go through approval as part of the fee schedule process in the budget process. Our payer groups, our, our government payers, private pay and, and private insurance. And those break down to Medicare and Medicare managed health organizations, Medicaid and Medicaid managed health organizations, TRICARE, Veterans Administration and others. Of course, we have the MAP program. Federal payers, it's defined by the payer, must be deemed medically necessary. And there's a fee schedule established to only allow amount that can be recovered. And we got some examples in, in the presentation here. And bill balances must be billed to the patient according to the federal payer requirements. The important part to know is this, that they create a fee schedule much like our own insurance company, that says what's allowable and what they'll pay. If you go to the dentist, there's a certain charge for, you know, cleaning, a tooth extraction, whatever. That's already negotiated ahead of time. Our MAP program is through the Central Healthcare Community Collaborative. And it's a medical assistance program. It's an established contract with us to partially reimburse the city of Austin for fees related to the transport of their patients. This is a, a price contract. It's an annual fee paid for by all MAP transport patients. This year, we received 696,822 for that contract. So that was the amount that we took in from the MAP program. The payer mix of what we see in our, in our customers and patients that we pick up, and these are invoiced accounts, these are the ones we are actually billing for. Private pays 33%, insurance is 21%. The MAP program's 5% of those patients. Medicaid's 12 and Medicare's 29%. As stated on our earlier slide, there's, in the federal payer schedule, there's only fee schedules that are allowed. And we're only allowed to bill or collect so much from those fee schedules. And you'll see that those are generally Medicaid and Medicare. They equal about 46% of those billed patients, which will get limited reimbursement from period. There's no, no other recourse for that by federal mandate. There's, and, and we'll explain further here in a second. Then we have 33% private pay and 21% of insurance. So this is a typical Medicare patient. And we used round numbers. Again, we, we use, again, our fees are $915 and, you know, odd amounts. So we rounded it up just to make it real simple math. If we charge $1,000, there's only, by Medicare, there's only $400 allowable under their fee schedule. So that's all they're potentially going to pay. But Medicare and Medicare only pay, pay 80% of their fee schedule. So they set the fee schedule and then they say, we're only going to pay 80% of that. So the total that we can bill a Medicare patient or a secondary insurance like TRICARE, VA or others is only $80. $600 is uncollectible. We cannot go back to the customer or anybody else for that $600. And that makes up some of that 46% of those accounts we've talked about earlier. If you go to Medicaid using the same example, it's a $1,000 charge. They have a fee schedule of they'll only pay $300. They pay 80% like the other payer. And you cannot bill any secondary insurance or others for that net difference of, which would have been $60. So now $760 of the bill is uncollectible. We cannot go after it and to the person themselves, a private, a, a third-party insurance or anybody else. It is, it is off the table, so to speak. So between those two and the MAP program, 46% of the bills that we invoice and send out are reduced in some form or fashion that we are, have limited collectible abilities to, to go forward with. This is just a graph of our transport revenue. And this includes the 1115 waiver that we saw for the uncompensated care increase. So the yellow line is what we were budgeted as far as revenue. And you can see back in 2014, we had a very low budget at that time for revenue. And then in 2015, we started seeing, we, because of the increase that we saw in transport revenue based on the additional dollars we received from the 1115 waiver Affordable Care Act, we raised our, our budgeted revenue amounts to, over the years. And it's kind of fluctuating, gone up. Right now, 2017, we're expecting to be under our budgeted revenue amount for our CYE projection. But we're right around $24.5 million is where we're figuring we're going to come in for budgeted revenue. And that's just transport. That doesn't include the, in our local agreement, in the dollars we receive from the county for services in the county. This is just transport revenue. In total, just some real, you know, big numbers there. The gross total charge is 62 million. Non-billable charges to, to do federal law or MAPs, 18 million. Our net charge is 43. We get about $26 million back as 61% of net charges. And our total accounts are 79,040. That's what we billed last year. And so their average revenue per bill, when you do that, based on some that aren't getting paid fully, is only about $239.02. Just in conclusion, I mean, recovery for funds is very, it's difficult. Requires a lot of documentation on our providers, our medics out there's, they have to do some detailed documentation to ensure that we can push that bill out and make sure that has the correct codes, that goes through the correct processes and that all our signatures are taken care of. Because if there's not a signature, we have to send back to the patient so they can get a signature so that we can send to their insurance, you know, company. So delays sometimes. And if there's no signature, then sometimes you can't even bill for that patient. And that's really the, the, the whole presentation there. I thought you might ask some questions in comparison. We're at the $915, 901 and 966. Houston charges $1,000. Houston charges $1,072 baseline for their bill, and then they charge per intervention. So if they give you a medication or drug, that's another charge on top of that. If they do another service, that's a charge on top of that. We've gone to what's called an Advanced Life Support Fee 1, Advanced Life Support Fee 2. It's a flat schedule versus, you know, itemized billing. And so our rates don't fluctuate that much. Their mileage is 1350, their mileage is 1394. San Antonio charges $950 for the ALS 1, ALS 2, and BLS. All three rates for them are $950. They only charge 1250 a mile. We're a little higher on the mileage. They're a little bit higher on the basic charges across the board. That's just two examples there. One thing I, after reading budget documents for City of San Antonio, I noticed that they have a, if you don't live inside the City of San Antonio, that's $100 extra on your bill. I assume logically that would be that you're not helping fund the system, so then you pay a little bit extra. I don't know that that's, that was my own take from that. So there's other things like that are being done, I'm sure, around the country. Those are two things I looked at, just to give some comparison of systems close to us in large cities.
May I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Because I want to be clear. So if I'm on Medicare or Medicaid, and I also retired from the state, which people can't do, you can't bill my secondary insurance to get covered, I mean, get...
Only that's, on Medicare, we can bill that, I think, $60 or $80 difference to that third or second-party insurance. Like, my mom is on VA, she has Medicare, well, TRICARE for Life, Medicare, and then she has a teacher's insurance also. So we can only bill those, that small portion there. The bigger portion, what they don't allow, we cannot bill that to anybody else.
And that's a federal law?
That is federal.
Okay, Mayor, so the next time you go up to DC. I mean, that's serious, because I'm looking at what we're unable to claim.
Yeah.
And that wouldn't make you whole, but it would certainly close the gap.
Yes, ma'am, it would close the gap, and that's some of the discussions we've talked about in the past. Even if we were to raise our current fees, there's a person, you're just going to be, those are uncollectible, but would they offset potentially others that are collectible and are being collected, but then those people are paying a higher amount? So those are the discussion points.
Sounds right. Yes.
Not relevant to the previous conversation. I guess I'm really surprised at a discussion, I don't want to say interest, but questions over privatization. I could see more of a desire for merging as opposed to privatization, because, I don't know, it seems like in privatization, it's usually a corporation making a lot of money and services dropping. And so I'm, I'd be interested and disappointed if we move in that direction. But I had a question for law. If, you know, right now, the fire department's under a consent decree. Are those same kind of hiring standards applicable to private? So if we privatized our fire, do private companies, are they under consent decrees? And are they required to, you know, show that there's not a disparate impact on hiring and that kind of thing?
I don't know the answer to that, but that's something that you could pose to Lee Crawford, and I think he can get you an answer.
Okay. Because that'd be interesting, because one of our goals is to make sure that our public safety reflects our population, and we have increases in minorities, and that's, you know, why the fire department's under a consent decree. If any of these were privatized, I don't, I would be concerned that it doesn't matter who they hire, they could hire whoever they want, and that would be a big concern if the people that we're sending out for public safety calls do not reflect the population of our community.
For me, generally, I was more interested in the consolidation issue, as it may be recurrent, as opposed to privatization. What I don't have a feel for, because I just didn't know, and that's what I meant in terms of the capacity, there were several different options that were listed on the option page. Are all of those privatization options other than the one that says consolidation?
So there's, all those options can be done different ways. For example, there's nothing that says you can't transform our system from a third service to high-performance system, or there's nothing that says we can't develop a public utility model, and instead of hiring a private provider, we would simply hire the current staff into that model. So there's varieties of things you can do to make those systems work within a community.
So someone had suggested, in looking at this slide, that all of them, except for the combined fire, were privatization elements. But when I looked at this, I thought that some of these could also be the non-privatization elements, and that's where I was getting caught up. But my sense is that this is too big an issue for us to be able to do in this budget season. But it seems to make sense to me that we ought to take a look at if there's a way for us to daylight these questions, either with a consultant, with the right consultant, or some way, so that it's not a recurrent issue every year when we get back to this, so that we can actually get a feel for those issues. Does anybody else have anything?
I just want to say, it's a recurrent issue because it's such a huge chunk of our general fund, and that merits us having to talk about it. But I also want to point out that it is such a huge chunk of our, and remember, I'm the one that says, let's give more to Health and Human Services, but it is such a huge part of our general fund because it is such an important element to keeping our citizens safe. So as we have this discussion, it's, yeah, it's always going to come up because it is a big chunk, but it's a big chunk for reasons. That being said, obviously, we can look for ways for efficiencies, but...
Yeah, and part of it, I mean, I, one of the reasons that this city is great is because of our public safety record in the city and the employees in the departments that we have. And it's one of the benefits, it's 70% of our budget. So you're right, I'm going back to your question, last budget session, can you find 5% somewhere? Can you find 4% somewhere? And now that we've done this dive on it, I understand why that is such a hard thing for you to have responded to a year ago. And it seems as if there ever is the question of actually being able to find even 1% change, it would require us to make some systemic change, or something bigger change, some policy change. So we either make peace with the fact that there isn't going to be a change, and we have a percentage of our budget that needs to go there, and we just need to stay there and prioritize in it, and then we don't have to talk about that again. Or we need to consider some things that are more basic, if we're actually going to want to be taking a look at that, in which case, we should take a look at that. But you're right. I mean, it's, we pay 70% on it because it's so important. Anything else? Then we'll come back here at 1 o'clock to continue. Thank you very much for the presentations.